Where is this one gonna be at? Where's Kensington Gardens? Oh, that's, that's the annexation.
Yes.
I think so.
Yes, the one on Spear Road.
Yep.
There's not much to that.
The one that we didn't really.
Unfortunately.
Okay, we are at the bottom of the hour. I'd like to go ahead and call the February 24th, 2025 Peachtree City Planning Committee order. If everyone who are citizens of the United States would please rise and join me in pledging allegiance to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and start. Any announcements or reports?
I have one announcement. I'm joining you guys again for this meeting briefly, but I wanted to introduce Shayla Reed officially to y'all as the planning commission. She's our planning, new planning director. I got to introduce her to council a few weeks ago, but you guys haven't had a meeting for a minute. So I'm officially introducing her today. She's been with us three weeks, three weeks now. So she's doing a great job so far. We're excited to have her here. And yeah, I think that's it. Do you have any announcements? Do you wanna say anything?
Sure, I always love to speak. Awesome, I, thank you. I come as a local Fayette County resident nearby, so I'm looking forward to seeing what we can do here together as a team. So thank you for this opportunity and looking forward to working with you.
Same here. Thank you very much and welcome.
Thank you.
Uh, do we have any additions or deletions? I know it's not up on that agenda, but...
Just, uh, it, it shows on your agenda there. We, uh, we did have a, an item that's been postponed, the conceptual plat for the Kensington Gardens, which is on that Spear Road annexation property, and we'll hear that next time.
Okay, perfect. Okay, approval of minutes. Everyone has an opportunity to go over the minutes from the January 27th meeting. Any comments, questions? No? Okay, none being, do we have a motion for approval of the minutes as submitted?
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Minutes approved as submitted. Uh, no public hearings this evening, uh, no old agenda items. So we're gonna go into our new agenda items. The first one is the landscape plan, Cylon 101 Sierra Drive, and turn it over to staff.
Could I suggest that we maybe swap the items?
Sure.
In case the representative for the landscape plan might show up.
We can do that.
Okay.
Sure. So we'll then go to the conceptual site plan for the daycare facility, 1501 Georgian Park.
Alright, so this site is, um, one of the out parcels of the Kedron Shopping Center, uh, and it's situated behind the Target building. Obviously, this large building is Target here, and this is the parcel that we're looking at. Right here where the big X is. Um, the property is zoned GC, general commercial, uh, and does permit the proposed daycare facility. So here's the site plan. The proposal is for a 12,000 square foot building, uh, and an outdoor play area as required by the state, and parking lot with 40 spaces. Uh, the subject tract is 1.36 total acres. And the, um, the access for the property is going to be off of this, um, public drive is what it's called in the deed. You'll notice that this is on a, an actual parcel that's owned by the city rather than, you know, being shown as a, a typical right-of-way. And we did confirm with the city attorney that this, uh, lot will not be considered a corner lot. That's why you, uh, don't see the required parking setback along that public drive. Uh, so the, uh, as you saw in the aerial photograph, the property is currently a wooded lot. It has a gradual slope from the front, front to the rear. So they are proposing, um, a low retaining wall right here, which will require a separate permit, by the way. The parking requirement is for, um, 40 spaces, and they are meeting that minimum requirement. No golf cart spaces are, uh, being proposed at this time. The, uh, Georgian Park is classified as a village collector road, uh, which is a major thoroughfare that requires a 25-foot buffer, which is shown here in the green. They're meeting that requirement. And also Georgian Park, uh, being on Georgian Park, they will, um, be required an additional architectural review that they'll come back to you, uh, for later approval with, with that. The, uh, there is a multi-use path nearby that comes from the, um, parking lot of the Kedron Village Shopping Center, uh, runs down here along this public drive and then continues in both, uh, directions. I think on Georgian Park. I think this is, um, multi-use path and not just a sidewalk. Uh, let's see. The, um, the state requires, um, outdoor play area based on 100 square feet per one-third of the center's capacity for children, and the applicant has stated that the facility is designed for 160 children, which would be a requirement of, uh, little over 5,000 square feet of outdoor play area. Uh, the applicant is proposing 9,000 square feet, uh, which exceeds the, the minimum standard. Uh, let's see, one last thing. In addition, the, um, GC zoning district, uh, is not, in the GC zoning district, a, a development is not, uh, allowed to cover more than 75, 75% of the lot with impervious surface, and the proposed design here covers, uh, 62% of the lot, so therefore they, they, uh, meet that. They meet that requirement. Um, the setbacks are 40 feet in the front for building, and there's also a 20-foot parking setback. Uh, the side setback is 10, and rear is 20, and they are, uh, meeting all of those requirements. So staff is of the opinion the proposed site plan meets the city ordinances and standards and recommends approval of the proposed daycare facility.
Thank you, staff. Do we have the applicant or applicant's rep? Please, uh, go to the microphone and state your name and who you represent.
Good evening, I'm Bob McCann, Haynes Gibson Associates, civil engineer, project civil engineer for the project.
Great, welcome.
Thank you.
Uh, do you have anything to add to staff's presentation?
No, sir. Uh, we just respectfully request your approval of the site plan.
Okay, great. I'm gonna go ahead and, uh, turn it over to questions. Gonna start to my right, Commissioner Chris, any questions to start?
You know, I, I don't have any questions. Yeah, thank you.
Commissioner Hamner?
No questions.
Commissioner Liotta?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have just, uh, a few questions about how the facility will operate, just so we understand the, uh, the facility itself, how you're gonna handle certain things. So there's 160 kids are anticipated. How many, how much staff, teacher per class is there? Average child in the class?
I don't know the exact numbers, but I do know there is gonna be a mix of, of preschool, um, older kids, younger kids. I can get that information for you. I don't know it off the top of my hand.
Okay.
I, I know it is, it's a national daycare place, and I know they have standards, and it's, it's a, you know...
So, so who's gonna operate the facility? What's the name of the company?
Uh, kinder care.
Kinder care.
Kinder care facility, yes, sir.
One of the things that, um, we're always careful about with, uh, childcare facilities is access to the site, access to the interior, to the playground areas. Could you just describe how the parents drop kids off, what the process is? And then just describe for us how you access the playground and how it's contained, if, if you wouldn't mind?
Sure, the, uh, the vehicles, the, the passenger vehicles will come in off of, uh, Georgian Park, pull it in front, either pull up, most of them will probably park, walk their kids into the facility, and it'll be a secured facility in, in through the doors like most daycares are now. There may be some that pull up in the front and try to drop off, but I would think the, the majority of them are gonna park, walk their children in, into the facility and get them signed in or whatever, security measures they use on the inside. Uh, we are proposing fences. The, the entire rear playground area will be completely fenced in. Um, we're having a six-foot fence around the, I guess that's the west side and the north side of the facility. And then along the, the south side is, because it's, uh, one of the city's regulations is we're only allowed to have a four-foot fence. So we're gonna only put a four-foot fence there, but we'll have extra fencing behind that, you know, as, as security measures, 'cause one of the, obviously, concerns is we don't want any coming up right to the fence, any, any people walking past. Also, with the, uh, undisturbed buffer along the front, there'll be some trees there, so that will help with the screening of the building also. So people won't necessarily be able to just see kids out in the playground playing at all times.
Would you, would you be able to just point, point out on that, uh, concept sketch, if you can, where the, uh, I guess the playground containment fencing is? 'Cause it looks like there's some other doors at that south end of the building that... I'm, I'm wondering how those are controlled in terms of people getting access to the facility?
Yeah, those are, those are doors that will be controlled from the inside, obviously, and I'm sure since the side, the, the public side, they'll, they'll do some more type of security. I'm sure it's not a door you can walk into the outside. There is a fence, there's a little gated fence here that will run on the side, and then here all the way back is where the six-foot fence will be. This is the mechanical yard here, so we haven't shown you, but I'm, I'm thinking they're probably gonna wanna put some other secondary security fence across here just to keep the kids, you know, although there's a, it will be walled in, the mechanical yard. But also, they kinda walk off this, this lower sidewalk just because of the regulations and the four-foot fence, to keep people, you know, from getting in that, it'll be more security measure.
Okay.
And then on the inside, there are a separated fence to keep the, the different age groups in the playyards kinda separated.
Okay, alright. Laura mentioned, uh, a little bit about the site itself, that it slopes from the street towards the back.
Sorry.
Could you give us an estimate, if you can, how tall that retaining wall's gonna be in the back?
In the back? We haven't got to the full grade yet, but we're thinking 10 to 12 feet along the rear side, in that range somewhere. Uh, along the front, you know, obviously, we're gonna flatten it out, we're gonna cut into the, the high side and push all the dirt to the low side of the rear, and it does slope pretty well back there. So we're thinking the 10, maybe 15, like the highest range is the backside there. And then in the front, it, it should be pretty low, five feet, four, five feet.
Okay. So, so you have fencing along the retaining wall itself for safety reasons, but is that also the playground containment?
The playground fence that will be along the rear playground on the, the, the west side and the north side will be the same, the back is the same security fence.
Okay.
Here we have, uh, will have some, depending on the exact height of the wall, if it's, I think it's over three feet, we'll get some type of fence.
Okay.
But it'll be a decorative type of fence that complies with the city's regulations.
Just a few more questions. Um, do you have any idea what kind of play equipment you're gonna use and whether the equipment is gonna have shade structures?
Don't know if there are any shade structures. That's something we could find out and get back to you on. I'm not positive. I knew they do have, you know, general playground equipment out in their playyards. Um, I don't know about the, the shade structures.
Or ca, or some kind of a canopy sometimes there, canvas?
Those are becoming more and more popular, just about every playground or every, uh, you know, thing that we do like that has... I would think they, I would think they will, but I'm not positive, so... You?
Good evening, my name is Andrew Johnson. I'm the project manager for the developer firm, Insight Real Estate. To answer the question regarding playground equipment, we use the same playground vendor for all of our equipment across the country, so we can certainly provide examples of all the playground equipment that we typically use. Uh, it's broken out differently by age group, as we referenced earlier. Different, uh, sections of the playground have fenced in areas with gates to access the different areas. Typically, for older children, there's something of a jungle gym that has a canopy above it, uh, that acts as a shade structure, uh, but it varies from project to project. So we can provide examples for now, and as we get further into the design, when that vendor provides their final design, we're happy to provide that as well.
Laura, I, I think you said that they'll, they'll need to come back for elevations and...
That, that's correct.
So you could bring us some samples of anticipated play equipment, as well as what kind of play surface?
Yep.
Safety surface you're gonna use?
And to answer your earlier question regarding staff, our current counts show 17 staff members plus or minus four, um, traveling members throughout the facility.
Okay, terrific, alright. Uh, Mr. Chairman, that, those are all the questions I had. I just wanted to get an understanding of your operation, who the vendor is. It's a national company, they've been in business a long time. Thank you. That's, that's it for now.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Haynes, any questions?
Uh, thank you, Chair. As you all know, I love asking fire-related questions. Do you anticipate this building being sprinkled based on its size?
I believe we'll sprinkle them, I think, just for the pure safety. And there are existing water lines out in front of the site, um, that run back down over the hill towards the Target, so, um, there is an existing water line that will branch off right from the front into the front of the building for fire domestic.
I think the only thing I have isn't really necessary, a comment needs to be addressed right now. There's maybe just something for more, once you get into the design. Um, this will be an FPA 13 sprinkler system, so just make sure your FTC isn't an area where you won't incur stacking from pickup and drop-off, 'cause you got limited fire apparatus access. But that's all I've got.
Okay, good.
And the only question I have, you know, I know there's a kinder care over in Fayetteville. Pretty much, I mean, the designs are somewhat similar. I mean, there, there'll be some changes, of course, because of the areas and stuff, but kind of the same, same sort of thing.
To be honest with you, I'm not familiar with the design of that building, but this will be the newest prototype.
Okay.
Uh, it constantly evolves quarterly, um, and so it'll pick up all the design changes that the prototypical plant sets have incorporated over the years.
Okay, I appreciate it, thanks.
I, I actually do have a question.
Yes.
If it's okay, Mr. Chairman. Um, you, I, I've just noticed that there is a, a sidewalk that's actually connecting, uh, to the cart path. I just drew a kinda line next to it there. I, I, I know that you're at the 40 spaces, and I, I know that this may not be a site where a lot of folks will pick and drop off via cart, but you are connecting to the path. So are you opposed to maybe adding a few golf cart spaces? Kind of like in this general area where I'm, I've got my cursor there?
No, we're certainly not opposed to it.
Okay. Yeah, I'd love to, I'd love to have you guys work with staff and just put a few in. It wouldn't take up much space, and it looks like you've got a little bit of space there. And, uh, I know staff, you, you've said in the past that not only can we, you know, make room for spaces, uh, you know, in the, in the area where it's not a buffer, but if they need to go into the buffer, that's allowable as well, isn't it?
I don't recall that conversation.
I may be making that up. Okay, well, well, maybe what we'll do is we'll approve it conditionally with the ask that you work with staff to add a few spaces, golf cart spaces in there. 'Cause you already have a connection.
We kinda had that in our mind, we thought that the, the site plan, if someone asked for parking spaces, the golf cart, that's where we could put it.
Okay, yeah.
So that works out fine.
I, I think the one that we did go back was the, the daycare facility, um, down off of, uh... Oh.
Willshire.
Southside, yeah. By Rockaway where we went in, but I don't believe that was in a, a buffer area. I think that was right in the front.
That's right.
That we were able to go ahead and have them put a couple spots in, but, yeah.
Okay.
I think we can get four or five parking spaces, golf carts with no problem.
Perfect. That'd be great.
Okay. Commissioner Haynes, any, any comments?
No, sir, no further comments.
Commissioner Liotta?
Uh, no further comments.
Commissioner Hamner?
Always love to see a new commercial, so, welcome.
Commissioner Chris?
I live in the Kedron neighborhood, and, uh, you know, I'm super excited to see this come. I know there's a need for it in the community, so excited to see you guys doing this. Thank you.
Question to, to staff. I, I believe this may be the last parcel off of Georgian Park. Is that correct, or is there still one?
There's one available, just two, two lots down.
Okay. I, I couldn't remember. I, I know this was open.
Yeah, there's one there.
Right there.
Okay, perfect, okay. I, I know we're getting to the, to the very end of available parcels for, for commercial or anything such as, as this throughout the city, so this is one, one less, but that's, that's not a bad thing, so...
Okay. Um, and, and it's great seeing new business come in to the, uh, to the city. Um, and I, I think, you know, it's good to see, and I know in my neighborhood, we've, just in the time that I've been there, we've had quite a turnover. Older families moving out, retiring, downsizing, a lot of younger families coming in, uh, so a lot more kids, uh, which is great, so this is another thing nice to see is, you know, this kinda says that, hey, there's a lot of, of younger families with, with younger kids, you know, coming into the city too, which is, which is great, so, excellent. Okay, um, with that, gonna go ahead and look, seems like we're, we're all in favor with conditions. I'm gonna look to a, uh, motion.
I move to approve the conceptual site plan for the daycare facility at 1501 Georgian Park with the condition that applicant work with staff to add a few golf cart spaces where designated in today's conversation.
Okay.
And, and that they, uh, bring in some samples on the play equipment and possible shade structure inclusion in the play equipment, uh, at the time of building elevation review.
Okay. So we have a, a motion with those conditions. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion with conditions and a second. Any other comments or questions? No? If none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Approved with conditions as stated.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, I did see in my email that the, um, the applicant for this request or this application has, um, is not able to make it tonight, so we'll move forward without them. So the, uh, location, uh, for this is the, um, Cylon Project, the expansion, uh, at 101 Sierra Drive. Here's their, uh, site off of Highway 74. They're across the road from Certainty, which is right here. Certainty, Cylon, and the expansion is in the rear, rear of the site, right there. You may remember the, uh, conceptual site plan last year. Here's their proposed, um, planting plan. The impervious surface area, the new impervious surface is 26,781 square feet, which will require 80, um, uh, over-story caliber inches and 54 under-story caliber inches. Because the property is, has an abundance of trees on it, uh, they have proposed some four-inch caliber trees to help meet the, uh, requirements. And so the proposal is 84 inches of canopy trees and 56 inches of under-story trees, which exceeds, uh, the requirements there. You see 105% and 104% there. And the, uh, four-inch caliber trees, I believe all of the, um, over-stories are proposed to be four inches. The variety of species, um, will provide some good fall color. And also, I did do a little research, since you like to ask about the native plants, and they all are, um, either native or the cultivars are adaptable to, uh, Georgia and basically the eastern United States. And that is all I have to say about that. Staff is of the opinion that the landscape plan for Cylon, located at 101 Sierra Drive, meets the requirements of the, uh, landscape ordinances and recommends approval.
Okay, thank you. I, it, it would have been nice if, if the applicant or representative would've been here, because I know one of the commissioners does have some, some questions that he and I, and comments that he and I kinda touched on, uh, but we'll go through that as we go through. Gonna go ahead and ask for any questions of, of staff at this time. Commissioner Haynes?
Nothing from me at this time.
Okay. Commissioner Liotta?
No questions of staff.
Okay. Commissioner Hamner?
No questions.
Okay. Commissioner Chris?
Just, just a question about this expansion, just generally. I, I know that this is coming off of the backside of the property, is that correct?
That's correct.
So when we, when we do the expansion, we don't look at the entirety of the, of the property? We only look at the expansion piece?
That's correct, just new, new impervious area.
Got it. Okay, yeah, no, no further questions.
Okay. I'm gonna go ahead and keep it with you. Any comments?
I, I mean, it just kinda seems like it's not a ton, but I, but it definitely, uh, exceeds the, the caliber inches, so from that standpoint, uh, seems acceptable to me.
Okay. Commissioner Hamner?
Overall, this plan looks really good. Thank you as well for asking about the native plants of Georgia. The internet agrees with you as well, so that's good to see. So, yeah, thank you for doing that.
I also have the Bible of, of trees. Ray, you probably know what I'm talking about, Michael Durr, yeah.
So one, one comment and, and kind of a question. It, it's been a couple years now, um, but I believe you were able to secure, and I can't remember where you got that from, a pretty comprehensive spreadsheet of native plants. Is that still, and Laura, do you know, is that still on our kind of website in, in kind of the reference area? I, I know it was sent out, but...
It's, it's the list that Athens Clark County uses.
Okay.
Um, and I still have the spreadsheet and I can send it to you.
I recall that now, yes. Um, no, I don't think we've posted it anywhere.
Yep, I'll send it to you.
I'm sure UGA has a ton of that information available too, because they have a landscape architecture program there, so...
It was a pretty comprehensive spreadsheet, and, and it might be good just to put it in as a reference item. And, and I thought that it was, but I don't know if it got taken out, or maybe it was never added, but...
I, we definitely have shared it.
Yeah.
And we've discussed it, uh, but we haven't talked about, like, the actual implementation of it, which, yeah, I, I've got it, so I can, I can share it again.
Add to the video.
Yep, perfect, okay. Commissioner Liotta, comments?
Uh, yeah, I, I do, and it, and it, and it's kinda funny, this comment coming from me, because I'm always pushing for, um, plans that will meet the ordinance and use the tree fund less than more. But honestly, in this case, for this industrial site and the size of trees and the amount of trees that they're putting in just to meet the ordinance, I think it's overplanted. And I honestly would be in favor of them reducing some of the, uh, canopy and even some of the under-story trees and use the tree fund in this case, particularly in that circle area directly behind the building, because I think it, it could be problematic for the equipment getting in and out of this building. And although I commend them for coming up with a plan that meets the ordinance, I, I think it's just not the right place and the right, uh, site for compliance.
I had the same thoughts.
And that's just a sod area back there around, around where the trees are, so, um, yeah, I'm, I'm gonna agree and, and say if there's any way to go ahead and, and reduce and be able to utilize those trees to the, to the tree fund, that may be a great thing. I mean, they can still go and, and do some planting, of course, um, but it, it does look like it's, it's overplanted a bit.
So I think they could come in and, and work with staff on, you know, reducing some of the canopy and maybe some of the under-story, uh, to some extent, 25, 30% of the trees that are in there to just loosen it up a little bit. Maybe more under-story than canopy because of the location. Uh, but I, I think staff can certainly figure that out with, uh, the applicant's, uh, designer.
Okay. Commissioner Haynes, any comments?
Uh, I would have to say I, I agree about maybe utilizing the, uh, the tree fund, specifically with the plantings in that, in that same area, just because of your existing stormwater infrastructure. I'd be afraid of the, the root holds affecting that, which is gonna affect the runoff of the entire site, especially with the airport being right behind it.
Okay. Okay, any other comments, questions? Okay. Do we have a motion to approve with conditions? Okay, do we have a motion to approve with conditions? Commissioner Liotta, I'm kind of gonna look to you for that.
I'll move to approve the plan subject to the applicant working with staff to reduce the plant material to some extent that's reasonable and the remainder to be complied with through the tree fund.
Everyone good with that? Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve the landscape plan with the condition that the developer work with staff to reduce plantings and look to add that to the tree fund. We have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, approved with conditions. Okay, great. Staff, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So that pretty much takes care of at least the planning commission part of it. I'm gonna go ahead and hand it over to Commissioner Hamner for the UDO. And at the very end then, I'd like to go ahead and get it back to staff to go over our next meeting and, and what we have for that, so Commissioner Hamner?
All right, well, thank you very much. So we had our first UDO steering committee meeting on February 10th. We covered a lot of material during that time. Some highlights from it is that we reviewed Fayetteville's recent UDO. It's very extensive, it's very big. We had some kind of like cheat sheet table of content printouts made that we can reference in the future. But having said that, the full UDO is located in our shared Microsoft Teams drive, so you're welcome to check that out at your leisure and enjoy all 400-plus pages of regulations and guidelines that Fayetteville has recently implemented. It's really impressive what they put together. And I'll talk about the outline more in just a moment. We also reviewed the Microsoft Teams space, just to make sure that we're all familiar with it. And we also reviewed a very important document that lives in there called the task tracker. The idea behind it is just a shared Excel sheet where we'll be able to dole out certain tasks and be able to keep track of what, what's on our plate, the timelines that we've established for ourselves, and also have a history of everything that we've accomplished as well. Having said that, we also talked about some things that we would like to start moving on. And, you know, the 10th was about two weeks ago. We haven't made too much progress, but thank you, Ray, for going in and adding in some additional things. Also added into that document since the meeting as well is that we did have one citizen join, Keith Larson, he joined, and his letter to the UDO steering committee has been uploaded as well into the shared drive. Recommend you guys check it out. He was a proponent of adding in some really interesting and good things ultimately into the UDO process for us, for consideration on that. We talked about, at length though, about some of the initial first steps that we wanted to take. The first one, I'm gonna break this out into two categories, about the UDO committee and things that we should be focusing on first, and then as well, we also had some requests for the city and, and working with you guys to see about getting some materials as well. Starting with the committee, the first, some of the things that we talked about for that is really three things. Number one is working together on establishing our goals, mission statement and objectives, which you, you know, provided a good outline for us. We have three different documents that live in our Microsoft Teams drive right now for goals, mission statement and objectives, with some examples of very first pass ChatGPT provided kind of recommendations and really just a jumping off point for us to consider on that. So that's something that we should be working on now that, you know, we're all, like everybody now on the steering committee has, has heard about this and seen it hopefully as well, that we should really be focusing on over the next two weeks. I'm gonna send out a message tomorrow, I actually have time tomorrow to send this, and I blocked it off, so it's actually gonna happen, where I'm gonna highlight where the documents live and for all of us and Commissioner Reeves as well, to help work on that over the next two weeks. And ideally, when we meet again for the next steering committee meeting, we can take a look at all the suggestions that we put in there, craft those and, you know, check off a rather large task. That would be good for us to set the ground for the steering committee. The next task of three is starting to work on a framework of what the UDO may look like. Like I mentioned a moment ago, Fayetteville has done a really great one, and there's probably quite a bit that we can at least, not written in stone, but at least that we can start to leverage and start brainstorming ideas of the way that we may want to think about this. It's obviously not going to be, once we finish it, this, over the next couple of weeks, it's obviously not gonna be set in stone. It's gonna be very fluid, but at least it gives us a starting point on this, and then we can continue to make adjustments from there. And then the third part, and this is probably a little bit more future looking beyond the next two weeks, is just for us to start thinking about quick wins. What are some, what's some low hanging fruit that is easy to do and could move us in the right direction in terms of accomplishing our goals that we can do and just start checking those off really quickly. So that's more of a brainstorming activity, and those are the three tasks that the UDO committee is gonna be working on at least for the next two weeks on this. But the priority for right now should be the goals, mission statement, and objectives. Any questions, comments so far?
No, that sounds great.
Cool, perfect, excellent. All right, city staff, hello. So there's a few things that you can absolutely help us out with as well on this, and there, there's four major things. Number one, this is a big one, get ready, identifying all of Petri City's ordinances and starting to have a, yep, go, go for it, Laura.
Say, we're on it.
Beautiful.
Well, we figured out the page numbers too.
That's the first one. So yes, I'm glad to hear it's in progress on that, but that will really help set the, set expectations for us in terms of like, what do we have to work with? The next part, part two of four, is again, Fayetteville has done this great UDO. You know, we're already talking about poaching some of the things that they've done for our own framework on this, but it would be great as well to find, to be able to contact potentially the people who did the UDO, and we would love to invite them in and come talk to us about the things that they did that worked really well for them, find out the things that maybe that they did that they shouldn't have done, and then impart their wisdom on us for those, et cetera. So it'd be great just to have them come in and just learn from them. Go ahead.
Just a question, would that be the staff of Fayetteville? Cause I don't think the consultants will probably be able, just cause they wanted to be it if we were.
Right.
So I think you're asking for the staff, am I correct there?
I'm, I'm open to it personally. Staff would be, again, whoever we believe, without paying them, would be the appropriate people to come in and just help us out.
Staff or the city volunteers that helped out?
Yes, yep.
And I think, I think at the meeting, we discussed you interfacing with the Fayetteville, your, your equal over there and, and having that discussion.
Ironically, the city of Fayetteville Community Development Director used to be the Community Development Director here, David Rast.
All right. Number three of four, website presence. So it's our understanding that, you know, we need to have a webpage talking about our work, listing who we are, et cetera on that, so it's just a matter of establishing a page for that. And then the final thing is working with you guys to begin an initiative to have city council understand the scope of the project and the potential, and start introducing the idea of, of, of bringing in a consultant to help us out with that as well. So those are the four major things that we'd love to partner with you guys on, on that.
If I may add?
Yeah, go ahead, please.
Awesome. So the awesome part about that is that most of everything you've named, we've already kind of started.
Beautiful.
Right? We have identified majority of the ordinances that would be necessary and needed, the location of those Laura mentioned, we're identifying the full count of that file. The average ordinance is going to be 500-plus pages when it comes to a development code. So with that, we'll be able to compile that, share that information with you shortly, and then go from there. Fayetteville, I can say that I have, I've created relationships with them thus far. I can start a conversation just to see how that went for them, to begin those conversations, and then of course, once we are able to identify where our goals and objectives are, we can begin having conversations with our website to identify how we can tell that story. For council, definitely I think it'd be great if I can provide reports to them, just give an idea as to what's being discussed in these meetings. I think that'd be a great opportunity for them to see what's being worked on as well as, you know, cause if there's an opportunity where we're needing assistance, if I'm providing periodic reports, they'll see the work we're doing to see what it's leading up to in the request. So I can definitely begin doing that.
Sounds good.
Yes.
And when we were pitching the idea of doing the UDO steering committee, we also committed to us, or a representative, maybe me, who knows, but us coming in front of city council and also offering updates as well. So know that we're open to doing that.
Okay, thank you so much. We will definitely jump for that.
And with that, that's the current state of the UDO. Again, I think that we have some really good first steps, and now we just actually have to do them.
I think, Laura, you were at the meeting when we were talking about gathering up all of the ordinance data. I think you were gonna give us some advice as to which ordinances might pair together in sections, similar to the way Fayetteville has organized. They have certain things in certain tabs, for use of a better term.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. No, that's a good, that's a good point. I, I'd forgotten we discussed it that way.
Yep, yeah, buckets, yeah.
Yep, start categorizing. And that's it?
Okay.
UDO?
Excellent. Do you foresee us having a separate meeting outside of the next planning commission meeting? Do we need to have something outside of the next planning commission meeting?
The next meeting, we should focus on the goals, mission statement, and objectives. We talked in the last meeting that, you know, we could start to do that, again, gathering ideas, we can start having conversations within teams as well on that, and the idea is that we can come to the next meeting and be like, yes, this looks good.
Okay.
Just iron out anything, any last concerns with it, and then, and then get that done. The other pieces obviously are that we've, that I mentioned for the committee are gonna be a little bit more work in progress in the framework and identifying the quick wins, et cetera. I think a lot of what we may talk about in the next meeting as well is dependent, again, in terms of like what you guys are able to, to pull together and we can partner with you on. And we can talk about that in between the next two weeks as well, so that way we can have a good idea in terms of what we can discuss in the meeting. Having said all that, the idea is that we, we hopefully will have a lot accomplished before we even set foot in this, in this building again as the steering committee, and we can just start checking things off on there. So, you know, if we have our next meeting, I'm assuming, you know, planning, for, we're gonna have another planning commission meeting and, and have things associated with that, is that correct? Like, do we have an agenda for the next one?
We do, for March 10th, yes.
March 10th, so we can use the end of March 10th meeting, like we are right now, and try and bang them out real quick.
And, and one of the things I know we, we kind of discussed, and I know Justin brought it up too, was, you know, just like city council has, they, they kind of have a, a working voting or a voting kind of meeting and a, a working kind of meeting. And I know we touched on that when we were starting to have this discussion, whether or not that makes sense depending on what we have coming in.
We have a lot coming in.
Okay, and, and I just wanted to kind of bring that up.
Right.
To see if, if that's something as we go forward, and it may not be near term, but it may be as we get a little further into this, you know, is it possible to have? And of course, that makes one of the meetings, which we would have, you know, everything gonna be probably a lot longer.
Right.
But then that would give that second meeting an opportunity to really devote into, into the UDO instead of having a, a cutout of X amount of time, it would actually be devoted to that. So.
Right.
I guess that's something to just keep in the back of our minds as we go forward and, and see how that can kind of go into it.
Yes, sir. So I think if the applications are coming, I guess, coming in aligned to how the calendar is working, we can strategically place the items on, I guess, heavier on one meeting versus the second. That would allow for there to be more, more discussion for the UDO on the lesser calendars.
And that's what we kind of had thought about, if, if possible.
Okay.
Knowing that it's not always gonna be possible, especially if we get into some public hearings, I, I don't think we want to have multiple, you know, public hearings if, if we don't have to unless that's the only way we can do things in, same night. I know we've had a couple where we've had two, but if we start getting into more than that, then it's, it's a long time for, for everyone. So yeah, we'll just have to see what that looks like. But it's something at least to keep in mind as, like I said, as we kind of go forward, so perfect.
Yep.
Excellent, okay. Anything else? Anyone on UDO? Okay, great. Want to thank Kenneth and, and the team. Unfortunately, I was unable to make the first meeting. I, I was sick and I felt terrible that I wasn't able to, to be there, but it sounds like it was a really good meeting, so thanks everyone who, who was, who were present. With that, gonna turn it back over to staff, so it sounds like we have March 10th, is that correct?
That's correct. If I'm remembering correctly, we have, we have three things. Remember the car wash on Stevens entry? They have some modified elevations, which actually looked even better than the original, coming up next time, and then, oh, see, I knew there was another one. The one that postponed tonight, which was the conceptual plat for the Kensington Gardens on Spear Road. We have one that postponed before it even got on the agenda for tonight, which is another conceptual plat for Bradshaw Estates, which is at the end of Sumner Road. Then finally, another landscape plan for the, the latest MOBA development site. And then we have, there's a, a bunch of things sitting on the web submittal right now. There's a couple more landscape plans, another building elevations, I think a conceptual site plan, and then another conceptual site plan that is gonna come to us after it gets a parking variance at the end of March. So March is gonna be pretty busy.
Okay. I mean, that's, that's a good thing, you know, like the, like to see the continued, you know, development, redevelopment in the city, so that, that's great. I know we've hit certain periods over the, over the years that I've been on it where it's been, well, we're not gonna have a meeting, and we're not gonna have a meeting, we're not gonna have a meeting, so it's actually good to see things coming in and, and things happening in the city, so that's great.
Okay. Anything else? Just ask?
So the meetings in March are March 10th and the...
And the 24th?
24th.
Okay, anyone else have anything to add? Okay, so do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.